Works session, today's Thursday, March third, two thousand twenty-two. Appreciate your attendance. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation requests. From the Sheriff's Office, K nine, pay, is it Pele? Pele and transfer ownership to original handler Chad Mobley, Sheriff Jeff Johnson, Sheriff. The button in the front. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Pele is, he is one of our multi-certified dogs in apprehension article searches, track, tracking and narcotics detection. He's been instrumental in finding individuals, missing children as well as elderly people. So Pele served our county well. He's made three hundred and three cases and he's been deployed out on searches for over a hundred and sixty-one times. So. He's done a lot of good for Dawson County, but I think it's now it's time for us to say goodbye to him. And his, his former initial handler was here, Chad Mobley, who left us to go work for the state and. He's graciously wanted him. He didn't want to give him up when he left to go to the state. I think that was one of his sticking points, but they've been reunited. And if the board approves it, we'd like to get him retired and get him sent back to Chad.
Questions for Sheriff Johnson?
And there is provision in the resolution that Pele will not be used in any other law enforcement roles.
Other questions for the sheriff?
Thank you. I don't think Pele's check is people on that health problems.
He's done a good job. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Did you, are you, were you asking how that moved to the now? Okay, y'all good with that? Did you have the resolution? You've got it. Okay, she's got, all right, good to go. Thank you. Yeah, let's. Yep, let, let me see it. I'll just go ahead and we'll read it while y'all are here and then that way we'll vote on it later. Let's see here, says a resolution retire Pele at Dawson County Belgian Malinas Police K nine, whereas OCGA thirty-six nine. Dash two permits the Board of Commissioners of Dawson County, Georgia, exercise control over property belonging to the county and whereas Pele, a K nine has rendered. Valuable service for the benefit of the citizens of Dawson County and whereas Pele has been working with Dawson County Sheriff's Office and whereas the Board of Commissioners. With Dawson County declares Pele retired on the condition that Pele shall not be used for any law enforcement purposes. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Dawson County Direct Sheriff Jeff Johnson to transfer Pele. As a sheriff deems appropriate now therefore Dawson County declares Pele retired. And that Pele shall not be used in any law enforcement capacity from and above. And after the date of this resolution without proper re-numeration to the, to Dawson County. So we'll take that up. At the six o'clock meeting or at the net, at the end of this meeting, when we go to the voting session. Well, I think. I think we'll just do it after, because that kind of messes it confused. All right, next up. We'll do it. I think they'll come back. Presentation of changes to the comprehensive plan, county planner Robbie or Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I don't know if I can talk Pele, but I'll do my best.
It's a dog. It's a dog. You did.
Tonight to talk about some minor changes we need to make to the comp plan. As you know, we have been working on some. Major revisions to the comp plan over the past year and we're, we're continuing to do that, but there are some minor things that we need to. Do to the plan in order to stay in compliance. And this is based on some of the zoning categories that have been adopted over the past couple of years. Specifically, the R two, R three and CHI zoning categories. These need to be incorporated into the comp plan. So that when we bring something before the planning commission and the board commissioners. We can, you know, have a, a plan that, that shows the appropriate locations for, for these zoning categories. Well, I have contacted Adam Hazeal with Georgia Mountains. And he agrees with us that it is a minor change. I actually have a letter from him that I sent to Kristen earlier today. It's a minor change, so we don't have to go before the state or anybody like that. DCA doesn't have to look at this one. He will, you know, look at it once we make the changes. We do require two public hearings so that the citizens can. Have a, a voice on the matter, but with that being said, I ask you to, to, to bring this back for a public hearing on the seventeenth.
It would just be a vote.
For public hearing.
Vote to have a here.
Yes, sir.
At that day. Questions for Robbie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of request to modify the subdivision regulations to provide for a family density exception, planning and development director Sharon Farrell, Sharon.
Yes, good afternoon. There's been some inquiry and requests that families that have larger parcels. Be able to split for family members and the language in front of you, there's a few sections of just cleaning up the ordinance. But the meat of the ordinance is one thirty-three, three thirty-seven. It moves the variance process from the planning commission to the staff level. So if there is a family that would like in the RA zoning, would like to give two acres to one child and three to the other. They can do it at the staff level instead of having to go through a public hearing process.
Questions for Sharon?
I know this is something that I've kind of been talking to Sharon and Dave a little bit about is there's just some. Trying to find a way without open up. Our five acre tracks and RA to just everybody, but I've had a lot of families that are, that only have maybe seven or eight acres. And they want to give their kid a couple acres to build a house on and under our current. Land use resolution, we can't do that without rezoning it. And then when they come up for rezon, it's causing issues of spot zoning where you have a. A higher density in the middle of some RA property and I was just trying to find something to, to remedy that without opening everything up. As well.
Is this the same thing we addressed with the one time catch up?
Yes, we, well, it's not the same thing, but we went through the correct zone and to do this very thing, but now. It seemed like maybe we're backing up again, but that's just my.
Well, the, the corrective zoning, you had to have it planted before. But before we changed the land use resolution, which was a little over a year ago, I think. And with this, it wouldn't matter if it was planted or not, it would let a family pull out property to give to their kids. Without having to go through the rezoning process, which I don't think we've ever, any of this come up since then, I don't remember us turning anything down. And I just think it would kind of. Make it a little bit easier for them. I don't, I'm not trying to get higher density or anything. But I don't want it to be hard on the people that's lived here for generations and they're just wanting to. Like I know a family that's, that's got, I think they've got twelve acres total roughly and there's. There's three people that live on their two sons and their mother and they're wanting to give their. Granddaughter a. A lot to build a house on and there's no way to make a five acre lot. It just doesn't work out and they would have to rezon. And if they rezon to a higher density for just that one and a half acre or whatever it was going to be. You're going to have that just right in the middle of RA. And this would just be an exception and it, it does provide that it has to be a. A gift, the property must be gifted and it can all in it list in section B three. The grantor and grantee related as follows, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, you have to be. That type of relation before it could even. Happen as well, I understand it.
And I think some of the conversations we had before, we, we looked at doing something like this, seems like. There was issues with, you can't. Legally prevent a transaction from happening. So if that were to take place and then they turn around and sold it. There were some more, there were some more meat to the, the idea in, in theory, it sounds. Good, but then it could have been abused, I think, with some of the legalities that we looked at before and maybe we just pull that, that, that. Information up from when we looked at it previously.
We added five years for five years following the split that a permit could only be issued to that family. Couldn't pull a building permit if we came in and, you know, they had sold.
Right, but if that, but if the house, if you have family members and then just, just call it a, a mom and dad and had two kids and then they gave your kids land and then mom and dad moved or passes away. Then the house gets sold and through a period of time. It, it becomes ubiquitous that it's not just family members that are doing that process. So, and I don't think legally we can prevent them. If mom and dad get sick and the kids need to sell the house to take care of mom and dad. They sell the house, take care of mom and dad, then it kind of. That, that was just, I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just saying that was something that we discussed, I think, before on, on this particular.
And I think that's something that we can, we can look into, but also think that this is not going to be, the way that it's narrowed now. It's going to be a pretty specific situation and that may happen in the future, but I don't think. I don't think you'd be looking at somebody to. I think the circumstances would dictate that because if you're looking to sell the property. You're not going to be giving it to somebody to start with, and that's what this states that it must be given, even in the deed, I think it says with love and affection or something. By that the deed, it must be deeded with no monetary. Change of hand and I just know that. I think the five acre thing on the RA is, is understand the intent of it to keep. The, the densities down and I'm fine with that, but I just, I don't like putting a burden on families that's been here for years. They just want to, want to expand what they, you know, what they've got. I mean, my house is RA and it sits on two point two acres or something like that. And that's what my grandpa give all the grandkids two acres and. If there's one that wanted it now, we'd have to give five acres and it's not fair to the ones that's been done. Done before, but I just think it's something that hopefully we can, we can look into and. Get as few loopholes in it as possible, but still have it where it can help out the, the family that's been here for a long time.
Is, and, and is that who you're targeting? You know, okay, so what about somebody else? I hear about this, say this goat, this house and somebody hears about it somewhere and they said, boy. We go down there and we can build five houses on five acres. And can we say, well, you're not a family from here, so you can't do that?
No, you wouldn't have to be, you wouldn't have to be from here, but they would have to be willing to give somebody the property. And when it was sold, they could do that, but they wouldn't be getting any money out of the property because it would be given to start with. And I guess you could do some things on the back end when the house was sold, but you get into, you get into a lot of stuff trying to circumvent it when they could come before us and rezon for five houses. And not be. You know, it wouldn't be that, that big of a deal if you were trying to do that. I know we've had that before. We just, we've had some houses that have come up and rezoned to. RA rezoned to put eight acres and put five houses on it and we've approved that. But that was just for somebody to build spectacles of all. And this is just for, you know, there's always probably going to be a way to get around it, but I, I think it would be.
There will be.
It would be hard. I don't think it would be that beneficial. I mean, it's not happened when we were given the. Doing the one and a half acres up until a year or so ago, we didn't have that many that were. Busting down the doors to put up a bunch of houses like that. I know things are growing more now. But it's just, I really think it. I've had, I've had a lot of people ask me about this, that's just wanting to, to maybe give their kids some property. And to me, I just think that's too intrusive of the government just to tell them you can't.
Other questions for Sharon, comments?
Well, now what, what about this? It's like Chris was alluding to, you know, you've got this compound here. You've got the house on an acre in RA. And, and what happens if, if one of them live there and say their job changed and then they've got to move off? So what happens to that house then? Can they, I, I thought there's something here that they can't say that can they sell it and then somebody that's not family? Move into that house?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to restrict somebody's ability to sell like that anyway.
I don't think you could.
I don't think you could.
Shaking his head, no, you can't do, you couldn't do that, so.
Yeah, I thought there was something in here about that. I'm just. I don't know. I just think we just opened up the biggest can of worms.
Primary thing, and I think what Emery's trying to say is, you know, that it, it offers up. A family who wants their child to stay in this county, the opportunity for them to stay here.
Right.
You know. If I had twenty acres and I've got two kids, then I'd give them five acres. I wouldn't care, but I don't, if I don't have but six. And I want my children to live beside me, I can't give them the two apiece. And I don't know about anybody else, but I'd kind of like from the hang around here because I got some grandbabies I like to mess around with. So I don't want to move into some other place because, you know, and, and like he said, I'm giving it to them. So it's not like they're, I'm making any money off of it in that. I'm giving them, as he said, it's called love and something other. Love and affection, so, yeah, so, and I, I, I sit on an acre, one point four or five acres that I got today that I live on from love and affection from my aunt and uncle. So, and they were able to give that to me and my family at that particular time and we built a house on it and. And I would imagine that at some point in time that was RA as well. Because all, everything was RA at one point, even though I live on the east side and it's not RA now, but everything was RA at one point in time. So, yeah, I mean, I think it has some value. I mean, I think. I too have had people call me about the same thing and ask me if we were ever going to look at this. And, and obviously it'll take some public hearings and some things like that as well. So we'll hear from the public. In reference to that, if we get to that point. Find out what they think.
All right, what kind of conflicts will this cause with other documents that we've got?
We'll have to add, we'll just add some language in, I believe it's chapter one twenty-one in land use. That says you must meet all dimensional requirements unless a variance is granted. So we have about four words to add to another chapter.
And do you think the county manager is the one to make the decision on?
It's or designate, which would fall on us.
But the first mention is county manager. It does, but it says county manager. This is no reflection on you, but I don't know if that county manager should make a zone, zoning decision or not.
Oh, okay. Well, it could read the planning director or designate. That's just.
Yeah, what you think?
Or board, I said, it could say or board or whatever.
Well, we already, I mean, board already makes a decision now. It's the process of.
Plan, the planning commission, yeah. And you have seen some zonings where it was just so they could split it up with family. There's even some folks that will ask for RSR MM. They may not really want to move along, but it gets you the smaller lot.
Going back to that, well, that list, do we know how many parcels are left on that list that we had? Cause one time we, how many we have?
Of the RAC? Yeah, I'm told it's less than twenty.
Less than twenty? That's the ones that wasn't dated, right? Didn't have a data.
Yeah.
Or no recorded date.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm like y'all, I've had many conversations with people in the past, especially when this thing came up, came up before. Like many of the decisions we have to make, it's a catch twenty-two because, you know, if, if, if I've been here all my life and got my five, ten acres. I'm in RA and I know I'm protected from having a bunch of houses around me. That's the reason why we have zoning. And then we kind of peel it out and allow that to happen. I mean, that could be a negative to that person, but on the flip side, I mean, keeping families together nowadays, keeping, you know, a, a. A kid that wants to live next door to their parents and take care of their parents as they get elderly. I mean, there's validity in that as well. So. There's a lot of different ways to look at this. And.
Well, then we had one family came. Had two children. They, they split it up where the original house, the mother and daddy only had one acre. The kids got. One of them got five, one of them got four point nine or something like it. So it kind of. Put the one house on one acre.
And, and I, I, I have this curse that I can see both sides. But I, I just see the constant eroding of RA and y'all know how I feel about that. That, that's my problem with it. And, you know, we get to where we can eat asphalt and concrete, we're going to be okay. And if we can plant gardens on asphalt and concrete, we're going to be okay. But when we keep eroding. All this agriculture land and, and all the trees and all that, that, that's, that's just, that's my problem with it. And I just have to express that. I, you know, I haven't talked to Emery about it. We've had pretty plain conversation about it and that. I, I just, I just see it as constantly eroding and. And that, you know, these, these places we're talking about probably farmland, but. I get this member of American Farmland Trust, two thousand acres of agriculture land a day is lost to development. Three acres a minute is gone and it'll never come back and that, that. And I understand people got to live and understand, so therein is my conflict. You know, that, that's, that's where I'm going with it and I get all things in the mail about agriculture and I see it and it's just. It's just very upsetting and, and I think most of the people I represent. And it is not just my opinion, but it's, it's what they want, that, you know, people want to hang on to this land and. You know, want a place where they can raise food and, and all that. That, that's my speech. That, that's what I'm worried about. The eroding of, of. RA and, and getting, getting just higher density and, and I thought we weren't. For that, but evidently that's the direction it's going in.
Well, it's just, it's just hard for me to look at some of the zonings that get past, you know, three, four, six to the acre. And then we tell a family that's lived here, this, their kid wants to live next door to them, that they can't live on an acre, an acre and a half. You know, and I, I, you're talking about kind of eroding the RA. To me, this would kind of help. Protect it a little bit because if you've, if you've got a family that lives up in the middle, you know, maybe on the west side or the north side. And they've got several acres of land and they want to do this, they want to put a house on five acres. They can come before us. And rezon it to, to RSR or something that's, you know, one, the one and a half units per acre. And it's going to be sitting in RA, you're going to have that spot zone. Well, this would allow it without that zone in there. So if you've got a track next to it and a developer comes and say, well, they've got this zone and. Two hundred yards from me, why can't I have it? You know, this would eliminate that spot zone and it would just be a family. Exception and it, I feel like it would help close the door to some of that. So I, I think. And it definitely needs to be looked into more, but I think the argument could be made that it would actually help protect some of the RA in that instance.
I don't, I don't think this board has, to my knowledge. Approved any of that density that you speak about and. We're sharing, we're talking north of, north of the city limits. I mean, the, the agricultural that's right next to four hundred. That meets the land use plan to be that higher density. That, that stuff meets land use plan. Yeah, it might've been RA for a hundred years, but. It meets the land use plan that the citizens come up with and it's sitting on four hundred. So, yeah, that RA can be treated differently than RA. On the north end of the county, which the land use plan calls for agriculture, period. You know, if it's called for something else other than agricultural on four hundred. Then legally we don't have a, a lot of wiggle room there. So, yeah, you, you've seen RA, but it's not been where you're talking about or she's talking about. They're two different things, two different areas.
Other discussion. Thank you, man. Next up, presentation of a resolution in opposition to House Bill ten ninety-three and Senate Bill four ninety-four concerning land use decisions. Jeff, you gonna do it?
Yes, sir, I can speak a bit on it. You have before you a form of resolution to express opposition to a couple of pieces of legislation that are pending. For the General Assembly, they're referred to as sort of build to rent legislation. Types of legislation that would at the state level force. Counties to adhere and follow certain and allow certain types of developments without having opportunity to. To exercise its appropriate local zone and land use decision-making processes. And so this is. A resolution, several other counties have, have approved similar resolution. a resolution. Several other counties have, have approved a similar resolution to express opposition to the House Bill 1093 and Senate Bill 94. And that's what this resolution would do, which is before you today.
If I, if I understand this correctly, it's just pretty well taking away local control and giving it to developers. And am I, is, is that to cut and dry?
I don't think you're far off base, ma'am.
Okay.
In the space of build.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's what's becoming popular.
But I mean, I still think locals should have to say, I think we should have local control. Instead of somebody else just saying, whoa, I'm going to target them. Here we come. And y'all can't do a thing about it. And this is, this is where we live. You know, so.
I think a lot of our stipulations locally that we put in place on developments prohibit a percentage of rentals in order to protect homeowners. Cause we ran into a situation at one point where it became a fully rental subdivision and it was, it was not good. So with that, we are able to put, today we're able to put stipulations in to prevent that. And the developer would agree to it, obviously, or not agree to it. But this would remove our ability to do that.
That's correct.
Who, but I know, I know you, for South County, I knew we did, what other counties have done this? Do you know?
Not offhand.
Because you don't have.
I did know about Forsyth.
I can't imagine anybody would be in agreement with it. You know, because I mean, it just takes local control away from us. Anyhow, we're, we're going to move that on tonight.
Was that the request?
Yes.
Yeah, they not got much longer left.
Y'all good with moving that forward?
Oh, yes.
Resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. County manager report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Good afternoon. An open forum for a public meeting concerning the proposed realignment and widening of Elliott Road will be held from six to seven, March the 15th at Fire Station Two Community Room. So that's for the Elliott Road, six to seven PM on March the 15th will be an open forum.
At, what'd you say?
Fire Station Two, ma'am. Okay. And it's in set time of the year for a second annual guns in hoses event. This is a driving course competition between our sheriff's office and emergency services personnel will take place at 2:00 PM, March the 22nd at Atlanta Motorsports Park. Chief Thompson has asked that I make mention, and I say that because of the amount of staff that's here on the sheriff's side. That they were, they won last year. So anyway, this benefit will be on March the 22nd at 2:00 PM. And this is a way of am putting on an event that brings a lot of fun and, and thanks to the, the sheriff's department and EMS for their way of saying thank you. So this is their second annual and the public is invited. And you'll be able to attend that on March the 22nd at 2:00 PM.
Will they go carton?
Yes, sir. So there'll be a go cart right between the two. So the teen maze will be held on April the first. This is a family connection event put on at the junior high school for the ninth grade class. The purpose of this simulated maze is to challenge students to graduate high school and learn a trade or attend college without getting blocked by the many obstacles faced in life that could prevent them from achieving these goals. This year, Laura Foulter with Public Affairs and Communication will have a booth to discuss your electronic footprint. At this booth, she will help students understand the importance of what they share on social media and how that can affect them for the rest of their life. Emergency services also will provide the opening scene simulation that includes a crash scene with extraction. The courthouse generator has died. So if you've noticed that when you come in, there's another generator down there. IT has been working with facilities to get a rental in place, which is, is down there now. And get the existing unit repaired or replaced. We determined to go ahead and repair it based on some of the delays and things for parts. It seemed the best route to go because we can't find the engine and it's been discontinued, that particular unit. So it's been a difficult time trying to do that. So in, in the meantime, we rented a, a unit that will, should the power go out, we wouldn't lose the, the services, IT services for both the courthouse or the sheriff's department. So that is being looked at by them. Additionally, the GIS department has moved from planning and development to IT. And so here, yeah, IT and IT will transition using the, the new email going out to georgia.gov instead of the Dawson County. And this, from what I understand, Herman's not here. Oh, there he is. In fact, if he wants to add any more to that, but this does provide an easier transition for the two emails talking to one another. You can probably explain that better. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Come on up, Herman.
So here's some IT tech topics. I'm IT. Okay. So dot gov, our new domain name is going to be Dawson County GA.gov. We're still going to have DawsonCounty.org. The old email addresses will forward to the new email addresses. Okay. So the email address that you've had for years, you're still going to get your email from that. It's just going to be forwarded to the dot gov. The reason why we're moving to this is because it elevates the county in the eyes of citizens and other government entities. This is something that counties and other government entities aspire to get is that dot gov. We had to jump through a lot of hoops, saw a lot of paperwork and get some certifications and things like that, just to be able to get this name. So it also helps in our transition to Office 365. Because instead of having to move everyone's email all at one time, okay, to move to Office 365, which if we kept DawsonCounty.org as our main email address, that would be quite a challenge, moving about 600 email addresses all at the same time. Okay. That just has problems written all over it. Having the dot gov will be able to go department by department and set up, okay, well, your department has 20 people in it. We'll set up your people on the dot gov, old email addresses will forward and there you go. Okay. So that keeps everybody up and running and allows us to do department by department deployment of the dot gov. That make sense?
Why, no.
Okay.
One citizen say that they aspire for us to have.
Well, the good news about it is it doesn't cost a dime.
To the website and, and all that, do we have to do the other, we can't do dot org anymore, let me dot.
It'll be dot gov.
So when is the dot org over?
That's something I'm going to talk to you all about on the 17th.
Okay. So it's not over yet.
Correct. Because the Office 365 goes hand in hand with this. And while the domain name is free, obviously Office 365 is not, because that's where Microsoft makes all their money nowadays. So.
But that's where, that's where more cyber security is located too.
Absolutely. Because Microsoft handles all the cybersecurity for email when you're hosting on their servers. So yes, that is a big deal. And it also will fix a lot of the issues that we've had with our email server. You know, you've seen that we had one day where email was completely down. That was because of an update to the email server, which sits in this building, killed the email server. So we actually had to restore from backup our email server in order to get it running again. And that's because Microsoft, they patch the Office 365 servers first. Then they roll it out to everybody else. So.
New technology.
Yep. Onward and upward. Any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Herman.
I would echo that.
You mentioned something about generators. Did, don't, somebody said something that we, this might be firing EMS about having a backup generator at Rock Creek and Veterans Park for a emergency shelter or something. I think maybe Tony Wooten was telling me about something, but I thought that we had one at Veterans.
We did.
We had a grant that we're working on. But it's a kind of a long process. Actually, so another document that they requested today for how we will fuel it here in emergency situation. Right now we're looking at a 200 kW with just Rock Creek.
Don't we have one?
We do have, but it's not the same size.
We have a portable, but it's not big enough to do.
We got a military surplus one a couple of years ago.
But it's.
We can deploy if we have some type of critical infrastructure that we need to give up, something that's not already backed up, but we keep that extension to.
And obviously that wouldn't run this building. That's the reason why we had that.
We did look at that. And you also have to have it wired for that portable as well, so that you can plug into it. Thanks, Herman.
Thank you.
I see a lot of zeros in his eyes. That's what I'm afraid of. I see that mind just clicking.
Any other questions for the county manager?
Thank you.
County attorney report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
No need for any.
No need for exact conversation.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, that ends our work session. We'll take about 10 minutes and we will come back and begin our voting session. Thanks to all you that are here with us. Hope you stay. And all those that are with us online, we hope you stay online with us as well. Be back in about 10 minutes.